Okay, we'd like to call this meeting into order if everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before we get started today, welcome everybody, good morning. It's great to be up here in Moscow. We're taking our commissioner meetings on the road for the next few months. I just want to first recognize and thank the borough officials here in Moscow who are hosting us here today. You've really done a great job in helping us. I want to thank Mayor Rose Marie Warner. Mayor, if you could just stand up for a minute. I don't know why she's in the back. Council President Arthur Pensek. I don't think Art's here today, is he? No, I don't see him. Council Vice President Edward Gahin. Councilman Joseph Castro Giovanni. Councilman Dennis Colley. Councilman Mark Gahin. Councilwoman Paula Beachaver. Councilman Bill Heim. Borough Manager Amy Carlson. And Solicitor Attorney Bruce Zero, who has been here for 30 years, since 1994. So let's give them a round of applause. So thank you very much. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Seeing that there is no one, we now would like to present... Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, Art, Mayor. Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
This is Commissioner.
Sure.
I want to say too, I'm not sure this is on the agenda or not. We're here to support the commissioners. If I may?
Yes, sure.
I'm not sure if this is proper time. I represent the North. I am a borough councilman, but I... Today, we're representing the North Pocono Trails Association. And we just wanted to thank the commissioners for your support of that rail-to-trail from Alumhurst to Dunmore. It took a long, long time for this to occur. The Rotary Club of North Pocono, 30 years ago, started this project as a Keystone project for their members. It took this long to keep it on track and to make it come to fruition. We were told years ago by former Parks and Recreation, Bill Davis, he kept on that program, just trying to keep it alive and trying to get it funded. And we thank him so much for moving forward with that, too, over the years. I want to thank, on your behalf, Kristin McNada.
Just walked in.
Thank you, Kristin, from the Trail Association. All of North Pocono, we thank you for the work you've done. We also want to thank Aaron Pikarski from Leeward Construction and Frank Suma, who was your engineer, from GPI. They worked together to create a very safe trailhead. There was an omission of a good trailhead on the old state road in Alumhurst. And with your help, commissioners, you funded that, you allowed to open that back up, and for the engineers to design a safe and accessible way to the trailhead. So we're so thankful to you for that, and all three commissioners. We know the support you've given. I know it's a difficult time for the county, the financial austerity that's taking place. But we just want you to remember, this trail is partially done, this is just the first phase. It will eventually connect to the other side on 590, to the Jefferson Township line, through Madison Township into Jefferson. And that will be part of... You'll be contiguous with our trails, the North Pocono Community Trails, which is 13 miles of hiking and biking trails, classic trout streams, camping, and so on, on forestry land, Pennsylvania American Water, and Moscow sewer authority land. We want to thank also the supervisors from Roaring Brook Township and Madison Township for their support on these projects, along with Borough Council of Moscow. Thank you so much for all you're doing for North Pocono.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. Okay, we have a proclamation that we'd like to present. This is 24-0110. And this is a proclamation declaring May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Lackawanna County. So I'm going to read this proclamation, and then we'll have Joanna Van Tyne come up and speak a little bit about it. Whereas mental health is a key component of every individual's overall physical health and emotional well-being, mental illness affects people of all ages, races, ethnicities, and income levels. Mental health conditions are not only common, but they are also treatable, and early and effective intervention can save lives and change the trajectories of people living with mental illness. And whereas only 50% of individuals with a serious form of mental illness seek treatment, feelings of personal shame and fears of social stigma and discrimination prevent many living with mental illness from seeking help. Untreated mental illness leads to a higher rate of emergency department visits, hospitalizations, school dropouts, and suicides. And whereas stigma leads to fear, mistrust, and violence against people with mental illness, who are significantly more likely to be victims than perpetrators of violent crimes. Greater public awareness about mental wellness can positively transform attitudes about and towards people with mental illness, making it easier for our citizens to seek help. Now therefore, we, Bill Gahin, Matt McGloin, and Chris Chirmack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Lackawanna County. And I'd like to ask NAMI Community Engagement and Volunteer Coordinator Joanna Van Tyne, if you would come up and say a few words.
Good morning. My name is Joanna Van Tyne. I'm the NAMI Northeast Region Community Engagement and Volunteer Coordinator. I'd like to say thank you, first and foremost, to our commissioners, because you read all of it and what it's all about. You took my speech away. But you heard what he said, and it truly is a pleasure to be up here this morning, to see the support that we have from Lackawanna County. It was because of all your support that led to our encouragement, that lead us to start community programs in Wayne County, Susquehanna County, Pike County, and Monroe County. We've grown into four other counties now, not just Lackawanna. We're doing a tremendous amount of work in Lackawanna County right now with education. We're educating children in the school districts, we're educating people in the community, we're even educating students at the university level and in community settings, when I say "community organizations," we're educating them as well. We can't get enough education out there, because the numbers mean a lot. One in five people struggle with mental illness. I think since COVID, it's one in four, you know? People really struggle. They need the education, but also they need the support. And we have so many support groups now, too, throughout Lackawanna County, not just for the individual that struggles with mental illness, but for the family members as well. And that means a lot, because when I was in Wayne County 15 years ago, there were very little family supports there. And we're bringing that to each and every county and each and every community. So I just want to say thank you for your continuous support. Don't stop supporting us where you're green throughout the month of May. And thank you for lighting up the lighthouse... The lighthouse, the green... The courthouse, green, for the entire month of May, to recognize that. And I hope you can continue to support us. It means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing I'd like to add with that is, about four years ago, when we put together the Lackawanna County Suicide Prevention Alliance, Mariana Kavitch and NAMI was a huge supporter in helping us get that rolling. And we have a great group of people. We have pretty much about 150, 160 members. We meet every other month, and it's just a great, great thing, and I appreciate all your help, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to start the business part of our meeting now, to work through some resolutions, and then at the end of this process, we'll have an opportunity for anyone who's here today to address the board. Okay? Okay, Resolution 24-0115.
Approving the current payables, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, 370-324-370800, inclusive, totaling $6,202,572.54. The county's electric fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $6,827,446.57. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 1, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0115?
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0109.
Authorizing a grant with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorize the submission of a grant to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the Section 903 County Recycling Coordinator reimbursement grant in the amount of $31,574. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 1, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Environmental Sustainability, Mr. Nicole Chirillo.
Good morning, Commissioners. This resolution is just to approve the submission of the PADEP 903 grant. This grant is offered every year, and we can apply for it to reimburse 50% of my salary benefits and expenses related to the position.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah.
And for those of you who don't know Nicole, she is one of the superstars that we have down in the county building, and she earns every single penny of that salary, so we're very grateful for the work you do.
Thank you.
Okay, may I have a... Yeah. Give her a round of applause. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0109?
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution is approved. Resolution 24-0111.
Accepting a proposal from ClearGov, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the proposal from ClearGov for the Byboard Digital Budget Book to commence on May 1, 2024, and conclude December 31, 2027. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 1, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Chief Financial Officer of Lackawanna County, Mr. David Bolzoni.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
The recommendation is to award a contract to ClearGov to assist the county with the construction of a digital budget book. The digital budget book underscores the importance of the presentation of the county budget. While the construction of the annual budget is a straightforward, but certainly a lengthy process, it culminates in a report, which is posted to the county website, which is presently lacking in presentation. We always consider the importance of the presentation of the county to interested parties, whether it's the general public, investors in county debt, rating agencies, developers or other business interests. The presentation of the annual budget is an important part of that presentation. There are five reasons for using digital budget book. The interactive nature of the budget template allows for the use of varying presentation formats, which include visual data not presently accompanying the current budget. The document may be navigated with much more ease than scrolling through line items to find requisite information. The ease of creation reduces the amount of time that would be needed to produce an equivalent document annually. And the presentation format accommodates all viewers. The ease of viewing procedures precludes the need to print an entire document to view only certain types of information. The county received three proposals. The most cost-effective was submitted by ClearGov, with an annual program cost of $15,300 and a one-time maintenance or setup fee of $4,500. The annual cost is subject to a 3% incremental increase in 2026 and 2027. The contract concludes on December 31, 2027, but can be renewed automatically unless terminated. The construction of the digital budget book will be a joint effort, including the county communications and revenue and finance departments. And both Pat and Kristin are going to be in a lot of heavy lifting, whether they realize it at this point or not. The board is recommended to approve the contract.
Okay, thank you. And I think we have a video clip that we're going to show that just will kind of give you a look at what this program is and what it will do.
Welcome to ClearGov. In this video, we'll explore how quick and easy it is to build an award-winning budget book in a fraction of the time. ClearGov's digital budget book engages viewers with an online book that's easy to navigate, can be viewed from a mobile device effortlessly, and can be downloaded as a professional PDF with just one click, to exceed public expectations for optimal viewing. And creating the budget book is easy and intuitive. You'll begin by either building your budget in our operational budgeting product, or by simply sending us your budget in an Excel spreadsheet. We will map your budget into our system. Then, at the click of a button, ClearGov will instantly build the framework of a dynamic budget book, with a table of contents, template of pages, and auto-generated content to save you time and give you a head start. Pages are fully customizable, and enable users to add content to any page using our pre-formatted panels for narrative text, charts, images, and more. Fund summary, funding sources, and department pages can also be created automatically, by filling out a few fields and pointing the tool to the specific content you want to pull into the page. The page is instantly created and auto-populated with compelling charts and tables to display the data. And you can add narrative to further customize the page. You can invite unlimited team members to add content to the budget book, to streamline collaboration and improve efficiency. Flexible user permissions let you assign them certain sections of the book and manage their access. ClearGov's built-in best practices checklist helps you create an award-winning budget book easily, for the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Users can view the criteria details, leverage auto-generated content for required sections, and check criteria off the list as it's completed to stay on track. ClearGov updates revenue and expense data automatically as your budget changes, saving time and reducing the risk of inaccurate data. And if your organization is using ClearGov capital budgeting, you can instantly pull in your capital projects and all the details to showcase your capital improvements effortlessly. Public viewers can download a PDF version of the budget book at any time, without any additional work from your staff. PDF budget books are professionally formatted, with a hyperlink table of contents and page numbers built in automatically. These are just a few examples of how you can elevate your budget book building process with ClearGov. We'd love the opportunity to show you in greater detail, and you can schedule a demo to learn more. For now, thanks for watching. Have a great day.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bolzoni on this? Okay. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0111?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second on the question.
Yeah, real quick on the question. So, I mean, it's our job... That was a fantastic video, by the way, Dave. It's our job to present the county in the best light possible. You know, our finances are just as important as our parks, as our economic development department, as our environmental sustainability department. And the analysis of the numbers that comes with this digital budget book, it'll show exactly what each department does. And it'll give our taxpayers a much better impression of the county than what we currently have. You know, I believe this is a massive step in the right direction for us to allow much greater understanding of how our budget actually works. And this is something that the people of Lackawanna County truly deserve. Very, very excited about this, and thank you again, Dave.
Thank you. Anyone else on a question? One of the most important parts of any government is the annual budget. It is a document that contains crucial information on the finances and the operations of our county government. Each year, the county commissioners, along with our CFO and Budget Director, are tasked with presenting the budget to the public so that they can understand how their tax dollars are being spent. Unfortunately, the budget document and the way that it has been presented in the past has left a lot to be desired. Reading last year's budget was like trying to decode Egyptian hieroglyphics, unfortunately. In the world we live in today, which relies heavily on technology, there is absolutely no reason that the county budget should be presented to the public in this way. Today, we will be voting to make the budget presentation much more user-friendly using digital budget book, which you just saw the presentation on. Instead of a page filled with numbers that are hard to decipher and understand, our new budget presentation will include a more effective visual component, the automatic updating of figures, and a look at the budget compared to historical data, like the last three or four years of budget figures. Charts and graphs that will make the data easier to view and understand. So we are finally moving into the 21st century by engaging with this company, ClearGov, to help transform the way that we present important financial information to the public. And this is part of Commissioner McGloin and I's overall plan to make county government more transparent and accessible to everyone. Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24... Oh, I'm sorry, we already did that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0112.
Entering into an agreement with CGI Communications, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with CGI Communications Incorporated to produce up to seven one-minute videos. Three, it's a three-year agreement to commence immediately, adopted at the regular meeting of Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 1, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Communications Director, Mr. Patrick McKenna.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Commissioners, this is... This project is an opportunity for the county to obtain... Produce and obtain high-quality videos promoting, not the county government, but life in Lackawanna County. It's an agreement with CGI Digital Communications of Rochester, New York. It's a company that works closely with the National Association of Counties on promotional materials. A very good aspect of the project is that it's free to the taxpayers of Lackawanna County. It's the production of seven, up to seven one-minute videos, one sort of umbrella welcome video, and then six videos about different aspects of county life, arts and culture, education, whatever we decide that should be. They do about two or three of these a year nationwide. And this year, they ask us if we were interested, and of course, we are. They've done three other counties in Pennsylvania, York Center, and Indiana. As a sample of what they do, we've loaded videos from York County. So we're going to show two of them. They're about a minute each. So with your indulgence, we'll show you what the videos look like.
A place with a sense of community and charm, where opportunities abound, we welcome you to York County. At the intersection of small-town charm and big-city ambition lies York County.
With thriving main streets, excellent educational options, eclectic shopping, farm-fresh food, and access to metropolitan areas, our vibrant community has a little bit of everything. From our booming business environment, to boundless entertainment options, delicious eateries, to historic landmarks, and so much more, we have something for all ages.
We prioritize safety, education, affordable housing, healthcare, and a high quality of life. With a small-town feel and top-notch resources, York County is the perfect place to call home, whether for a weekend or for a lifetime.
Discover York County. Visit us today.
Plan your visit to York County and have your memories made here. Spend a day exploring our fascinating history or attending one of our many festivals and community events held throughout the year. Discover all of the local attractions, including a bounty of unique restaurants, artisan shops, immersive museums, local farm markets, and numerous nightlife options. Piece together the perfect date night with a concert, play, or comedy show in our world-class theaters, followed by a savory farm-to-table meal. Or get away from it all as you tee up on one of our many golf courses, or enjoy hiking or biking for miles on the pristine trails running throughout York County. Bring the kids to spend the weekend tinkering, learning, and playing at York's many family-friendly attractions. Get out, engage, and explore all that York County has to offer.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0112?
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second on the question. I just want to thank Mr. McKenna for moving this initiative forward. I think, as you can see from the videos, it will be a great way to promote Lackawanna County, and of course, it's free, which is even better. But it's really great, and thanks again, Pat and Kristin. This is... It's a good initiative. Anyone else on the question? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Okay, Resolution 24-0113.
Entering into an agreement with Workers' Compensation Claims Third-Party Administrator, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a professional services agreement for the Workers' Compensation Claims Third-Party Administrator with NARO Casualty Services Incorporated out of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. It's a three-year term to commence May 1, 2024, and end March 31, 2027, at a price not to exceed $3,500 per month, with an annual $4,000 administrative compliance fee. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 1, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'd like to ask one of my fellow commissioners if they would make a motion to table this resolution?
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second on the question. This resolution is being tabled today. In the interim period between the work session when we discussed this in today's meeting, there were additional questions that came up about the resolution, so we're going to table it until a further time. All those in favor of the motion to table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been tabled. Resolution 24-0114.
Entering into agreement with Diamond Baseball Holdings, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with Diamond Baseball Holdings, SBW LLC, for a high school baseball All-Star game, the Field of Dreams, in June 2024. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 1, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Community Relations, Mr. Mark Cordell.
Good morning. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time. As Chief has explained, the proposals for... To bring back a wonderful pre-COVID initiative event that was going on with the Lackawanna County Field of Dreams High School baseball game, providing the opportunity to 40, 50 high school baseball players to utilize our wonderful asset in the PNC field that, obviously, it's a minor league baseball field, that they may never have an opportunity to play on again after high school. So with this, also, the proceeds for this would go into the Howerton Foundation, which raises cancer awareness amongst high school baseball players and softball players, and they also offer scholarship opportunities for them as well.
That's great.
So, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, may I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0114?
Motion.
Second.
On the question?
Yeah, really quick on the question. I just want to thank Mark for all that he's done for the county over the past few months or so. I'm really, really excited and proud of the direction our Community Relations Department is currently in and the direction that it's headed. You know, some of you may be aware, Mark is now... Mark and Rick and a couple others of our Community Relations Department are now out in the community at council meetings, borough meetings. Mark, you've been to 17 of the last 18 in April. Was that right? You only missed one. So I thank you for that. I know that's not easy. And I just want to say on this as well, I think this is a wonderful thing for our area and for our community, to be able to bring back not just the All-Star game, but the softball game, will be June 30 at the University of Scranton as well. But again, this is an opportunity for our high school athletes to... So this is a fantastic thing. I'm happy that it's back. And again, Mark, thanks so much for all that you're doing for our Community Relations Department.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
I agree. You know, to step foot on that field is pretty amazing to see when you're looking out into the stands, and I think it's just a great opportunity for our high schoolers to get that opportunity. Like you said, it could be one or the last time that they're able to do that, so I'm looking forward to it, so thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Motion 24 dash zero one one seven. This is a motion to accept the proposal from Interstate Safety Service Incorporated, 1301 Winola Road, Clark Summit, Pennsylvania, 18411, for rental of concrete barriers and attenuator as per PENDOT at a cost of ten thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. And our program manager, Megan Gabello, is here to speak on this.
Thank you so much for having me. Good morning, everyone. Just to reiterate, yes, this is a proposal to address Internet Safety Service Incorporated for three hundred linear feet of temporary barrier of concrete that would be used in order to implement the mural project, and additionally, a metal attenuator, which would act as a protection device in addition to the temporary barrier made of concrete. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? No. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. May I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Been a motion and a second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board. Would anyone like to address the question? Sure.
My name's Pamela Ayton. I live in Roaringburg Township. An update on the reassessment. Where can we find it? When will we know our area will be being done?
Yeah.
What's going on?
So 2026 is when the reassessment will be complete.
Okay.
So you'll get your new assessed value. There's a lot of information on the county's website, lackawannacounty.org, which they give you updates on where they are and how they're moving through the county. Leading up to that, there's going to be public meetings all over the county just to refresh everybody and educate them on the process, what it's going to look like, because of course, when people get their new assessed value, they're going to have questions. So we want to head that off by making sure that there's intense education prior to 2026. And they're about, I think, fifty percent complete?
Yes, and they update monthly on our website.
Yeah.
Okay. It's on the website, and it's updated monthly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board? Sure.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is John Chilary with the Northeast Pennsylvania Crisis Intervention Team, and in light of the Mental Health Awareness Month that you recognized earlier, I'd like to talk a little bit about a grant that was obtained by the county in late 2022, dealing with crisis intervention team training. The grant is continuing through the Lackawanna County Commissioners. What we are doing is training emergency service personnel, police, fire, EMS, dispatch, and other responders in crisis intervention training in the field. And the whole purpose of this is to, it's more than training, it's to bring the resources out to the people as needed, and working in conjunction with many of the organizations out there. I was a law enforcement officer for twenty-five-plus years, ran the Municipal Police Training Academy for five years, and one of the things that need to happen is to better train emergency service personnel, public response personnel, on how to deal with mental health crisis in the field. And I want to thank the Commissioners for continuing this grant. It's been very successful, and we run many training programs for, again, police, fire, EMS, and other response personnel. Any questions?
No, but thank you for all the work that you do.
Okay. Once again, thank you for continuing this grant.
Thank you. I've been to a bunch of those, your CIT trainings, and I know our COs from our prison go there, and it's intense, and it's a week-long thing, but it's well worth it, and they use it every day, so thank you.
It's a forty-hour program, and in addition, we run a, what I like to call awareness-level training called Mental Health First Aid, and that's an internationally recognized program that we put on as well as the CIT training is for emergency service personnel.
That's great. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, other business, Commissioner McGloin.
Yes. I apologize if I sound a little nasally today. Unfortunately, it's allergy time out there, and in fact, that was the excuse I used growing up in my house. I would just tell my parents, I have allergies, I can't cut the grass, I can't do any ER work. But just a couple of things. Commissioners have the opportunity to present a proclamation recognizing everybody's exceptional dedication and hard work at the 911 Center not too long ago. You know, this is a place where no call is a good call. Their tireless efforts and commitment to excellence are truly commendable, and they play a vital role in emergency response and public safety. I extend my gratitude to the staff at the 911 Center for their unwavering service and their invaluable contributions to our community. Some of you may have also seen in the news that, you know, we're thrilled to announce as members of the Airport Board, the new flight from Breeze that is taking off to Myrtle Beach starting on June 20th. You know, this expansion reflects our commitment to providing convenient and accessible travel options for our passengers while further enhancing connectivity between our region and popular destinations. We look forward to welcoming travelers aboard this new route and continuing to facilitate seamless air travel experiences for our entire community. And lastly, last Thursday was Take Your Child to Work Day, which was absolutely a great time. We saw an outstanding turnout of children who came to work with either mom or dad at the county. We provided a lunch, gift bags for the children who joined, obviously, their parents at work, and being able to witness the joy it brought to the children and to the parents was really amazing. I had the pleasure of bringing my oldest son, Marshall, who is five years old, and though, you know, he wanted to spend a majority of the day playing hide-and-seek in the office and eating candy, you know, from everybody's office up on the sixth floor, but having him by my side throughout the day was really, really special. And I believe something like Take Your Child to Work Day, it really helps provide valuable insights to our children into the work that we do on a daily basis, and it's so important, I believe, to be able to balance work and family life. So that was a fun day. In fact, he's still talking about it. So really, really cool moment for a father.
And now our kids think we eat pizza and cookies all day.
And play hide-and-seek in the office.
Yeah, that's what it is. Mr. Chairman.
It was all good stuff, and it was, it was a lot of fun. I wish my kids were younger, but, and yes, our 911 people, they're the small but mighty group, and they do a tremendous job. Yesterday, we had a, it was a joint effort with the Health Department, EMA, Red Cross, and I think even UGI was there, Old Forge Fire Department. They were doing smoke alarm giveaways. They gave away seventy-seven smoke alarms. They also had Narcan and some COVID testing things. UGI had a display set up of the Call Before You Dig and all that kind of stuff that they promote, but it was a good event, and I would thank Old Forge Fire Department for hosting. And then the other thing I have is coming up on May 18th, I know I brought it up at a meeting recently, the Armed Forces Day Parade, May 18th. It's going to start 11 o'clock in front of Geno Merly, and then it'll conclude at noon at the courthouse. There'll be static displays, Toby Hannah Army Depot, and hopefully, many other places will be there. It should be a good parade. We have a lot of classic cars that are supposed to be there, so let's hope we have a nice, clear day, and should be well-attended, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to once again thank all of the people of Moscow for having us up this morning. This is a really great meeting, and every time I'm up here, I'm really impressed with all the things that you have going on here in Moscow. I want to thank the mayor and all the council people, the borough manager, the solicitor for all of your help. I was on council for eight years in Scranton, and this really is where the work gets done. And there's so many people, whether it's the mayor, the council people, the borough manager, all the people that volunteer at the fire company, all of you are so dedicated, and you really are. The biggest asset that you have here in Moscow is your people. I mean, there's a lot of beautiful areas, beautiful parks up here, but your asset, greatest asset is your people, and I had the opportunity to meet so many of you during the campaign. So I just want to thank you again, and thanks for all the work that you do in making our county really great in what it is. Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Motion is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.